The Lemmonster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
It's now 6:30, and we do have a public hearing for legal affairs. Mr. Chairman?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is a hearing of Legal Affairs Committee. My name is Peter Angelini, Chairman. I'm joined this evening by the other two members of Legal Affairs, Ward Four Consul Mark Bedanza and the third member of Legal Affairs, Ward Two Consul Pauline Cormier. This is a public hearing. It's continued from our last meeting, and it's 6-23. Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. See attached letter. Of course, since our last meeting, the Planning Board had the opportunity to meet on this matter. And I have a letter dated October 19th, 2022 regarding petition 6-23 to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. Attention, City Council, on 10/17/22, the Planning Board voted six to zero to recommend petition 6-23, RE, to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles with the following edits. Number one, correct the spelling of disassembly. Number two, change the term vehicle overflow lot to vehicle storage lot within the table of uses. A draft of the proposed amendment is attached. Thank you for considering the petition. If you have any further questions or need further referral from the Planning Board, I would be happy to oblige. Regards, Elizabeth Wood, AICP Planning and Development Director. And attached is the draft proposed amendment. So at some point in the proceeding, she will entertain a motion to amend the petition as stated. So after much discussion, I guess the genesis of this petition is that around the city, these overflow lots started popping up in certain areas. The Planning Board didn't feel they had the necessary ordinance in place to control it. I know that they also established a subcommittee that met for several months. Correct me if I'm wrong. By the way, you're welcome to join us. Does the Commissioner come on? I apologize for not inviting you And so through that subcommittee, apparently we were able to iron out all the problems that arose during the process, during the public hearing process and so forth, and arrived at this petition. So at this time, Mr. Chaconi and Ms. Wood testified at the last hearing. If you have anything additionally you'd like to add, please feel free to do so.
I just, I think the members that weren't here, this has been a problem for quite a while. I never thought it was much of a problem until I was enlightened and I started driving around and looking myself. And I know a lot of you are aware of areas this is occurring in. Some of them are neighborhoods. So I just hope you look seriously at this petition and we come up with a creative way to end it without causing problems for businesses.
Terrific. Thank you. Ms. Wood?
And I have nothing, I have nothing more to add. Everything's in the memo that you received on October 19th.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Now, for joining us this evening. I'm sure that our councils will have questions. I think we, speaking for myself, I think that we wanted to get your feedback on this. And I think there were some concerns about enforcement overall. And, you know, I know that's a daunting task, and I wouldn't want to be in a position to be, to be the one responsible for that. So I think, in my case, I was just curious how this is all going to work as far as enforcement goes and how that chain of enforcement would work. So before I go on, let me go to members of my committee. Consul Bedanza?
I don't have any questions.
Consul Cormier?
I don't want, I don't have any questions, but I, but I do want to thank Ms. Wood and Mr. Chaconi for spending so much time the last time we were here to explain everything. And it's obvious that it's, it's well needed, and it needs to be addressed. So thank you for the efforts of putting this together.
I just have a question for Mr. Now. Have you received any calls about these overflow lots?
No, we've received no complaints. It's just that as you, as they mentioned, as you're driving through the city, you just, every once in a while, you just see cars, big group of cars. And so it's a simple matter of as times change, that the way people do things change. And for some reason, you know, 10 years ago, nobody had these overflow parking lots, or whatever you want to call them, for their businesses. Now, all of a sudden, everybody seems, all the used car dealers seem to, they like to go to the auction and buy large volumes of cars, but then they need someplace to store them. So we just want to put some rules in place so that they can still do that. They just have to follow the rules, keep the cars, you know, apply for permits to have a place to put them, and hopefully keep them kind of out of sight.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's the screening that's included in this ordinance.
Yes.
Will provide that, that out of sight, out of mind, hopefully. Let me open it up to the council. Do you have any councilors with questions? Consul Brady, you were quick to raise your hand.
I was very quick to raise a hand. I'm just curious if you've dovetailed in with the License Commission, because I know they have some authorities of issuing permits to some, but not all.
We, Ashley, this started, Mr. Brady, this started as a result of working with the License Commission and following up on some of the problems they were having. And I believe the first meeting was Elizabeth, myself, Peter, and Jim Kelly. He was part of the committee as well. Got very enlightened on what the License Commission does. I thought it was just about the alcohol licenses, but, you know, there's a lot of things that happen over there. And we got enlightened around the Class One, Two, and Three permits. We don't get involved with the junk yards. That's all state mandated. But Two and Three, the License Commission is the one that issues the permits and the number of vehicles that can be stored in those areas. So they've been involved from the start. We thought he'd be here tonight, but we did, absolutely.
Just to follow up on that. So enforcement would come from where?
Well...
Planning, license?
Once, once it gets into zoning as a zoning ordinance, then I'm the enforcing person. And this, this is something that is, I feel is needed by zoning, and it's not that, it's not that big of a thing, because there's only a few of these yards right now that I know of in the city. And it's just to regulate them a little bit. Luckily, one of them, right, two of them are right now are in industrial parks. So it's just a matter of let's keep them where they belong, keep them covered up a little bit. If they're, and if, if it's not required, when they go for their special permit, they'll be denied. So it's not like we're saying, no, you can't have, you can't have these storage areas for cars. We just want to regulate it a little bit.
Consul Shelton?
Yeah, thanks very much. Just to follow up a little, what Consul Brady was asking about. So in terms of enforcement, once it's a zoning, once, once it's in the zoning ordinance, it falls to the Building Department?
Yes.
And then what, what kinds of, so if somebody violates, if somebody gets an initial permit, they get a license to do this, and then, I don't know, they don't do the screening right, or there's too many cars parked there, what kinds of enforcement tools will you have?
Well, we can either take them to court, or we have the magic ticket book. We can fine them up to $300 a day.
Okay. That's an incentive. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Peter, is that just the violation itself, or is there anything tagged to numbers?
It, it goes both ways, but some of the, and the ordinance is written in two different places, two different ways. But normally, the highest you can go is $300 a day.
All right. Terrific. Thank you.
I'm good.
Consul Cormier?
Thank you very much. Peter, I think the biggest thing, you know, that we talked about at the last meeting, you know, was enforcement of this, and that's why we have you here. You know, obviously, we can pass all the ordinances we want, but if we're not going to move forward with enforcing, then, you know, they're meaningless. It's just an empty gesture on our part to, to tell our constituents we're doing something about these issues, and then we're not enforcing. So can you give us a couple of examples of where you're talking about in the city? And also, how, what are we looking at as far as, like, at this point, pre-existing non-conforming, which always comes up when you're looking to change some of this, and it's already going on? How's that all going to play into what's, what's already going on in, in the city, with these areas that you were speaking of?
Counselor, I just caution not to mention a specific address or specific property because they're not on the agenda and they're...
I understand. And I don't, and I, and I don't, I don't want you to, but just a general area of town is fine. And I, some of us might be able to use our, our imagination as to what you're talking about.
Okay. I don't want to get myself in too much trouble, but if you go down Mohawk Drive, there's a lot of cars sitting out there. There's different people that have them out there for different reasons. And, and that, right now, that's probably the biggest collection of cars. And then there's other ones, there's other ones that have smaller amounts of cars that, once again, just need to be regulated, regulated a little bit. So...
So...
I think part of the problem, Counselor, was when, when we first met, one of, one of the first things Peter spoke to me about was, the way it is in the books now, it's very hard to even get them to comply with the unreg, one unregistered car. So that the ordinance needed just a little bit more bite in order to regulate and give him more authority to go in there and say, hey, this doesn't look right. I mean, I, I take pictures, and some of those cars have been there that are supposed to move out in weeks, or they're months later. There was one place between Central Street and Lancaster Street, I won't mention where, that was a total disaster. And actually, there's been a little bit of cleanup there, which I'm kind of surprised, but for a while there, it looked like, it looked like the old dump on mechanic street. So...
We, when we find them, we start working with them, and sometimes it takes months because, to get all this stuff moved out. But yeah, we just keep on them until they, you know, as long as they keep showing progress, then we don't start with the tickets, because we don't want their money. We just want them to follow the rules and keep the city looking nice.
Right. No, I agree. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Good, Counsel?
I'm good for now. Thank you.
Consul Frieder, I thought I saw your hand up.
Peter, you and I have had a conversation about a couple places over the years. And they're still just as bad as they were when you and I first talked about it. And I know you've talked with them. Now it's just expanded to a point where it's all over everybody's lawn. I mean, it's a mess. It, it can't be legal, and I don't know who's the enforcing authority there. Is it the License Commission? I don't think so on that one. I mean, it's, it's, there's got to be some zoning violations on that. How far do you let it go before you finally just clamp down and say enough's enough?
Well, one, one of the worst offenders, we've actually taken to court several times. And every time we go into court, they show up with a lawyer, and we haven't brought a lawyer. And they just toss it out because they said, I don't even know why. The, we have a bylaw that says you can only have one unregistered car on a lot. Most people, when we send them a letter telling them, you know, you've got two or three or four cars, you can only have one, usually, when we send the second letter, they get rid of the, all except for one car, or all of them. We have a couple really stubborn people, and like I says, one of them, we've actually gone to court with, and for some reason, the clerk magistrate just keeps tossing it out. So the next time we go to court with that gentleman, we will have to talk to the city's lawyers with us. So...
If you're going to go to court, why wouldn't you take an attorney, our attorney with you? Why would you have to go to court by yourself? And...
Because 90, 90% of the time when we go to court, we don't need a lawyer, because it's black and white. And so it's a matter of, this is what it says, this is what they got to do. And normally, that's just how it goes. And so why pay to have the attorneys there if we don't need them? We've only had this happen with one, one group of people so far where it keeps getting tossed out. So we've decided, you know, I've decided that now we have to bring in, pay for an attorney to come in to make these people follow the rules.
Consul Frieder?
Thank you.
Peter, just, you mentioned earlier that some of these have multiple owners of cars in these lots. There's not just one person putting, putting cars there?
No, usually, it's just one person that has control of what's there.
Oh, okay. Because I thought...
That owns the property.
So it's a property owner that you're going to be, you know, working against or...
Yes.
Working with. Correctify it. Not just who has the cars there.
You couldn't count the number of businesses in some of these places.
Yeah, okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Or even know who they were.
Yeah.
Because they're not registered businesses with us.
Thank you.
Consul Cormier?
Okay. So I think I'm confused. So what you're telling me is, is we already have an ordinance that has teeth.
Mm-hmm.
So what do we need this ordinance for, then? I'm, I'm very confused because...
The, the reason for this ordinance is because this seems to be a new need. Like I says, the way these used car people operate, they used to go to the auction, and if they sold two cars, they'd go buy two cars. Now, for some reason, they go to the auctions and they buy 10, 20, 30 cars. They need a place to put them, because their dealer license might say they can have 10 cars on their lot, or 20 cars.
The License Commission.
If they buy 20 extra cars, they need a place to put them. So that's why this ordinance says that they get a special permit, and they can keep those cars basically like in, in industrial zone. Nobody wants them in neighborhoods. So it's, it's a new need. It's like, you know, if you go back 30 years ago, there was no such thing as cell phone towers, and everybody was like, well, what are we going to do with them? Now they're everywhere. And then solar, okay? You go back, the same thing. You go back 15 years ago, nobody had solar. Now there's solar all over the people's roofs. Every time there's a change in the way that people do business or with technology, we have to make changes to try to keep up with it. So we can go back to saying, no, you can only have the one unregistered car, but it's going to hurt a lot of businesses. So the feeling was, rather than hurting the businesses, just try to regulate it and keep them in, in the industrial zones where they're not devaluing people's home values.
Okay. All right.
Consul Bedanza? Yeah, that, that was a pretty good explanation, Peter, of, these things are springing up all over the country, not just here. But the problem is as old as can be. I mean, 1988, I brought an action, I get, as a special appointee for the License Commission, I brought an action against a landowner that was causing this problem. So it's been going on forever. I just would, I think Consul across from me brought up a good point. I mean, you know what Lincoln said about representing yourself? Just, just make sure when you go to court with these people, they have a lawyer in tow in the future. I, I think that gives this whole thing a little bit more teeth. So, thank you. Is there anyone else in the council that would like to opine? Seeing none. Let me go to the public at this time. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 6-23? For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 6-23? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak on behalf of or in opposition to petition 6-23? Seeing none, Mr. President, without objection, we move to close the public hearing. Thank you all very much for coming today.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's good seeing you guys.
Okay. Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, we have some 6:40 PM interviews.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Tebow, yes, if you'd like to come around.
What's that?
I just have to bring my resume, so I don't know. Tebow, you can have a seat. Ms. Tebow, my name is Pauline Cormier. I'm the Ward Two Consular, and I'm the Chairwoman of the Ways and Means Committee. The other two members of the Ways and Means Committee is the Counselor to my left, Frank Ardinger, and directly across from me, Counselor Todd Deacon. Thank you for coming in. We just have a few questions for you, and we'd like you to get to know, we'd like to get to know you a little bit better. So if you'd like to take a few minutes and, and just tell us a little bit about yourself, where, where you're from, where you live?
Well, I've been living in Lemmonster the past maybe 40, 50 years. My father brought up in Pittsburgh. And we had a business for about 30 years here in Lemmonster anyway, being in printing. And I've always been involved with organizations, no matter where I was or what job I had. And I was approached from, by someone at the Lemmonster Senior Center, because I go there all the time anyway, and asking if I'd be on board, because they have a couple vacancies. And I thought about it for a couple weeks, and I thought I'd, I'd like to do it, because I do like helping out others and whatnot, which I've done for many years, so in different organizations I've been in anyway. And at least it fills the void of being retired. So, yeah.
And I am, I am looking at your, I am looking at your resume, and I have to say I'm quite, quite impressed. Can you give us a little bit of information for, not, not everyone here has a copy of your resume as of yet? A little bit of your, your work history, your background?
Well, once I graduated from high school, I was hired before graduating and became medical records clerk at Burbank Hospital. From there, I, in 1966, or somewhere around there, I took a civil service exam and started working at Fort Devens under the Florida Master Division. And from there, I wanted to get back into the medical field and started working at Cutler Army Hospital. And as a medical records clerk, then a medical records technician, I got promoted. And after that, I was promoted to supervisor. And coding, medical records and everything, things going to the PHS and all that, and subpoenas, I was responsible for all that. And I've gotten an award for, you know, perfect performance at, from Cutler Army Hospital. And, and in the meantime, being with any of these organizations, I was on Worcester County, when I was at Burbank Hospital, Worcester County Association of Medical Assistance. I was treasurer of that. And any organization, when I was working at Cutler Army Hospital, they asked me to be on a National Association of Government Employees. I was secretary of that, and that's a union for the government employees. But once I was promoted, I had to leave that. And I was on a Disability Commission for a while, we're here too, in different organizations. And also, when my kids were involved with ice skating, I was on the committees there. I was correspondent secretary and test chairman for Wallace Figure Skating Club. And I was on the membership committee at Colonial Figure Skating Club. When the kids were in school, I was on the PTAC at Johnny Appleseed School on the Ways and Means Committee, and also chairman of the food, of food, the whole food area for the lawn party for five years, until they ended up going to junior high. So I've been in quite a few organizations helping out, and I, I just enjoy it.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at your resume here, and I have to tell you, just your list of organizations and affiliations would round out a resume for anyone. And I'm, I'm going to share the, your resume with the other members of my committee. But thank you, and thank you for, for applying to do this. Just briefly, Starburst Committee, Disability Commission as the recording secretary, volunteer at St. Cecilia's Parish, volunteer and worker for a Celebration of Life, Colonial Figure Skating Club, Wallace Figure Skating Club, Vice President, Johnny Appleseed School, PTAC, Chairman of the Food Booth at Johnny Appleseed School, Ways and Means Committee, Johnny Appleseed, taught CCD, historian for Our Lady of the Lakes Ladies Guild. It just goes on and on, and on. So rather than read it all, I'm going to share this, and I'm going to ask if there's any other members of my committee that have any questions for you. And we're going to start with Counselor Ardinger.
Ms. Tebow, thank you. Thank you very much for coming down tonight. And I don't want to ask you any questions, but I just have one comment. You are the epitome of the old cliche that when you want something done, you ask a busy person, because obviously you've done it all. So thank you very much for coming down. And you certainly have my vote.
Thank you. Counselor Deacon?
Yeah, I have really no questions. I just want to thank you for your dedication to the community and your volunteerism. And I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the council? Counselor Frieda?
I have known Marlene and her, her husband, and her family, and her parents, and her brothers, and her sisters forever. I won't say how long, because then I'd have to say how old we are, so I won't go there. But I, I think all the things in the resume, and I, I didn't hear all of them, but enough of them that I heard, there's, there are more that I'm aware of. I think it's more important to say, not only did she share all these things and do all these things, she successfully carried out everything that she attempted to do. She was probably one of the hottest... She was probably one of the hardest-working people I know. She goes above and beyond what she's asked to do. I've worked with her on many different things and many different voluntary, volunteer organizations, and we're just really lucky that she's putting her name in to volunteer for us. So I totally support her.
Thank you. Any other members?
Just quick. I just wanted to say thank you very much, because, you know, people like you who know the organization, you know, the Senior Center, you know, being an active participant up there, so it's a very valuable experience having you volunteer for the council on aging. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions, comments?
I'll be very, very quick. I just, I'm curious how you found time to join us this evening.
Well, being retired, I finally have a little time. That's probably why I, well, actually, one of the reasons why I'd like to be on the board, to be a little bit more active.
Terrific. I'm sure you do a wonderful job, and thank you for your service.
It sounds like your retirement is going to be the city's benefit, so. If there's no further questions, Ms. Tibo, thank you very much for coming in. If you'd like to stay, you don't have to. If you'd like to stay, I will ask the President a little bit later on if we can move up the appointment. Or if you'd like, we could, I'm sure we'll let you know.
Okay.
Right away. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
We just have another minute, and then I'm required to start the meeting. And then after we start the meeting, do that show of business, ask for a recess, and then we'll do the other appointment, I'm sorry, the other interview. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Lemmonster City Council for October 24, 2022 to order. Will you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm now going to take a roll call of all the members in attendance, beginning with Counselor Bedanza.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Ardinger.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Brady.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Deacon.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
And I am present. All nine members are present. Madam Vice President, do you have any records to approve this evening?
I do. Mr. President, I have reviewed the minutes from the October 11, 2022 meeting. I find them to be in good order, and unless anyone has any other corrections or anything that needs to be made, I would ask you to place those on file.
Okay. If there are no objections, the minutes for October 11, 2022 will be placed on file. Okay. I'm now going to ask him to take a motion for a recess. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Frida. All those in favor of entering into recess signify unusual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the council now stands in recess. Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, we have another interview this evening, if you'd like to conduct that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to invite Ms. Quinlan, Stephanie Quinlan, to come to the table, please.
Good evening. I did not bring a resume. I'm sorry, I was not asked to.
That's okay. Ms. Quinlan, why don't you take this opportunity, then, to give us a little bit of information about yourself?
Sure. So I got my undergrad in geology back in Keene around 2015. After that, I went and volunteered 600 hours with the National Park Service out in Arizona. Once I wrapped that up, I came home and started working in the field a little bit. I was briefly in publishing, where I was writing and designing science, earth science educational materials for Pearson. And then after that, I transferred into consulting, where I've been for the last five years, doing remediation projects under 310 CMR 40. Yeah, and now I'm really excited for this opportunity to be an active member of the community on the Conservation Commission.
Have you grown, did you grow up in Lemmonster?
I did not. I grew up in New Hampshire.
Okay.
I moved to Massachusetts in 2017. I was in Lowell. That's where I got my master's certificate in environmental geoscience. And I moved out to Lemmonster earlier this year.
So you're working, tell us a little bit about the remediation and what that involves.
Sure. So I work for people who have had accidents of some kind, vehicle accidents, or oil spills, or they've got gas tanks that have leaked, something underground, and the state requires them to clean that up. And so what I do is I help facilitate that for clients that, you know, don't understand all the regulations, come in and assess the situation, and either oversee the cleanups or advise them on other ways, you know, other people that can help them. The people that are doing the cleaning and the people that say when it's cleaned can't be the same people. So I work on behalf of LSPs to interpret the regulations and sort of write and oversee these cleanup activities, and then I write the closing documentation and submit that to the state.
So you're familiar with the CMRs and all?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I took, what, part of my master's program, I took the Understanding the Massachusetts Contingency Plan course with John Fitzgerald. I was very lucky to have that opportunity, since he wrote so much of it.
Excellent. You know that we've had some, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the entire committee, that we've had some, we've needed some help on the Conservation Commission.
Yes. I've heard that there have been a lot of changes in the last year, and I've attended several meetings at this point, some, you know, on both sides of the table. And I think that the commission that you have right now is very knowledgeable and dedicated, and I'm excited with all of the things that I can tell that I can learn from them, because as you've gleaned, I'm mostly a dirt-and-rocks person. I don't know much about biology. So there's, you know, things that I can bring to the table, but there's also a lot that I can learn, and I'm really excited.
Excellent. I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Ardinger to see if he has any questions for you.
Thank you very much. Master's degree in environmental science, right? Is that correct?
A master's certificate in environmental geoscience. So it's like half a master's degree.
Okay, okay. But still a pretty impressive resume, even though you didn't write it down. When you worked for the National Park Service, what did you do there?
I was part of the Geologist in the Park Program, so I was working in southeastern Arizona at a very small park called Coronado National Memorial. I'm sure you've heard of Glacier National Park and how it is a sister park in Canada. We were going to do something like that with Mexico, and the second half of the park never got built. So we just had ours that was right on the border. But I was working in cave restoration and remediation. I did a lot of cave mapping. And I also spearheaded a program looking at laser-stimulated fluorescence as a non-invasive means to evaluate the speliogenesis in different caves, which was awesome. I was part of the Cochise County Caving Club, and met some really interesting people in there, one of which had like a full spectroscopy lab in his basement. I just, the planets have never aligned for me like they did working on that project. But, yeah, it was very cool. I published a small paper in a park circulated thing. It was nothing too big, but.
Then I guess I can assume that you don't have claustrophobia going into the cave.
No, 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 I love it.
That's amazing.
But on bridges, my legs turn into jelly. Under the ground, much safer.
I would have to say thank you very much for considering joining the Conservation Commission. I'm sure that your expertise will be a big addition to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Deacon?
Just want to welcome you aboard. Thank you for stepping up into the community, and I think you're very talented, and I think you'll be an asset to the commission.
Thank you.
Well, good luck to you.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time in a bubble, not really aware of how my skills and expertise in my, you know, private industry, how that could transfer over and be like valuable or meaningful to any volunteer opportunities. And, you know, after meeting the commission and realizing that, like, you know, I might be qualified and I could help out, I'm really excited to be a part of the community in this way.
Thank you. I saw Counselor Angelini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity. Ms. Quinlan, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
So you mentioned you did some work on remediation. You're doing release action outcome statements, REOs?
Yes. That term, they don't, that term has been phased out, but that is the type of work. So some of it is, you know, AULs, and some of them are permanent solutions without conditions. But either way, I, it's like a funnel, right? So they do assessment, and then they find things that need further investigation, that gets kicked down to the next level. And I'm at the bottom of the funnel, where just all the juicy projects come to me. So.
If you're a rocks-and-dirt person.
Yes.
Then you'd be wonderful as a soils analysis person, right?
Ah, yes.
Which is predominantly, right, if you have hydro soils, you have wetland plants and so on and so forth. So I think you'd be a wonderful addition to the commission. It's where I started in local government, my service, such as you, and it was fascinating. And I think you'd be a marvelous addition to the commission. I thank you for volunteering.
Yes.
We look forward to having you onboard.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other members? Yep, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to have you down here this evening. Your background, it's, it sounds like a really great match. And I love the fact that, you know, you bring something to the table, obviously, but then also you see the Conservation Commission, you know, as a place for you to learn things as well. Rocks and dirt, I think it's just wonderful, because that's the name of the game around, you know, a lot of the neighborhoods, you know, in Lemmonster, and a lot of the challenges that are brought before the Conservation Commission. So thank you very much for stepping up and for, you know, beginning your public service here with us.
Thanks.
Counselor Frida?
I've probably been one of the biggest critics of applicants that came down here for conservation and for the conservation commissions we've had over the past few And I'm happy to see we've got someone sitting here that's got some background into the sciences and into conservation and into earth and rocks and, you know, basic knowledge of what's involved. I mean, I don't think people realize that when someone goes before the commission in their own little piece of Lemmonster that they're concerned with, that wants to do something, and they, they're with their engineer or with their attorney, and they're spending time explaining what they need to do, there needs to be somebody on the other side of the table that understands what they want to do. And there needs to be somebody there that can show up to be able to have that meeting so that they're not paying engineers and attorneys and not even able to put their case before anybody. So I'm very happy to hear your background and your excitement about the job, and I'm sure you'll continue to serve us well in that commission.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just, you know, I've been on the council here for about a dozen years, and, you know, before I was elected, I never thought I would have so many environmental and Conservation Commission issues that I'd be dealing with as a city counselor. So that kind of, you know, was something that opened up my eyes when I got into office and realized how much stuff goes on in just one little part of the city in my ward from this standpoint. So it is important work. It's very important work for the city. And your background definitely sounds very interesting, and it's also very impressive as well, the experience that you have that you're taking here. So I just wanted to welcome you to the city and to the Conservation Commission, and I'm sure you'll do a very good job and bring an interesting perspective, you know, from what you take here from your background. So best of luck to you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? No, if we're good. Ms. Quinlan, thank you very much for coming down tonight. I'm fascinated by your background.
I can send over a full resume if you want one.
That's, it's fine if you want to send one to the clerk's office, and we can have that on file. I thank you very much for coming in, and if you want, you're welcome to stay for the meeting. If you would rather go, we can let you know, but I'm sure that the vote is going to be swiftly, move swiftly for your confirmation. So if you'd like to stay, you're welcome to. If not, we will, we will get notice to you.
Thank you. And just on a final note, I am really proud of this opportunity. I already got to go to the MACC conference a couple weekends ago, and the enthusiasm in that room, you know, filled with people who are, you know, kind of putting their money where their mouth is and showing up to do what they can do to make the world, you know, feel like a better place. I was really excited to be that, in that room, and I'm really excited to take that energy with me.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, did you want me to address the, are we just taking that off the?
Well, he's not here. We can discuss it when it comes up during the meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Then I will turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are now going to hold the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter listed specifically on the city council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding to or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. At this point, no one has signed up to speak at the public forum, so I will ask, would any member of the audience like to speak at the public forum? Once again, would any member of the audience like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would any member of the audience like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed, and the city council now stands back in session. And we're going to move right into communications from the mayor, beginning with resolutions. C-22, Madam Clerk.
C-22, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request to accept a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for a community's grant program for upgrades at the Lemmonsters Downtown Common at the intersection of West and Park Streets in the city of Lemmonster, in dedication of Monument Square to recreational purposes.
And C-22 is going to be referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course?
C-22 has been given regular course. Moving on to money orders, C-23.
C-23, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $588,275 be made to the park grant fund, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
And C-23 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
C-23 has been given regular course. C-24.
Mr. President, just a point of aware, that's a two-thirds vote, not a majority vote.
For stabilization.
Oh, okay.
Alt, do the cookies.
That'll be corrected. Thank you very much. C-24.
C-24, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $220,534 be made to the school department expense account, the same to be funded by fiscal year 23E rate revenue.
And C-24 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
C-24 has been given regular course. C-25.
C-20.
The President?
Yes.
Just through the chair, to the finance chair. Can you get us an explanation of what an E-rate revenue is? That's kind of a new term. Do we know?
Yeah, I will have that for you when I present this at the next meeting, absolutely.
Good.
Thank you very much. C-25.
C-25, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $42,500 be made to the building maintenance expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Regarding this is to fund state mandatory elevator phase two code interpretation change compliance is required by 12/31/2022. Please note this should say two-thirds vote.
That's correct. Okay. And C-25 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course, please.
C-25 has been given regular course. Moving on to appointments.
Dean J.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the confirmation of the appointment of Michelle Powell to the position of Health Director for the city of Leominster for a term of three years effective November 14th, 2022, term to expire April 15th, 2025.
And this appointment is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I request that this be given regular course and we send an invitation to Ms. Powell for an interview on a date. Do we have a date, Madam Clerk?
I would recommend November 14th, um, at 6:45 PM.
Okay.
Mr. President, I have a point of order.
Yes.
We have no jurisdiction over the, the Health Director's position. We've never done this before. It's clearly stated, I believe, in, I can't remember what it is, but Chapter 111, section, or Section 111, Chapter 27, I think, that it's clearly, they're under the, is the Planning Board Director is under the Planning Board and it's their hire. The Health Director is the same thing. We didn't have Jeff Stevens down here. We didn't have his name down here. I've been here when Chris Canute was hired. We didn't have him down here either.
They, they came down here.
No.
9/13/2021, Jeff Stevens came down with the mayor and had a session with the council.
We never vote, we didn't vote on him.
He, no, but he did it as an introductory measure, so he's acting the same way with Michelle, just like we did with Planning Board.
But what I'm saying is this is, this is a board of health hire, not ours, not our appointment, not our confirmation. You're saying it is?
No, I'm saying I agree with you.
Oh.
I just put down what I get from the mayor's office.
Yeah, this isn't ours. I'm sure of it.
So, we did something similar, I know, with the Planning Board Director and I think it's a following suit as a...
We didn't vote on the planning director. We didn't vote on Elizabeth Wood.
Yeah, we did.
We voted to hire Elizabeth, no, we didn't.
We didn't vote to hire her, but we had her in for an interview and confirmation for term length.
Maybe an introduction, but we, we don't, we can't vote on her, her term to expire. I don't...
Okay.
I would check with the attorney. That's not our, it's not our jurisdiction.
If you, Madam Clerk, if you want to double-check on this?
It's already in process with KP Law now.
Okay.
Oh, you're already checking it?
Yeah. Because I saw it and I realized it might be a thing.
And we can still have them down here and we can, the mayor can introduce her and we can ask questions. And if we don't need a vote, then we'll just give it leave to withdraw if it's, if they determine that we should not be voting on this. Okay?
Thank you.
But I think the issue when she's hired is, it's hired as a department head is hired rather than have an end date of 2025. I mean, that, that would make a difference for any of us applying for a job. Are you getting your job for, as long as you do a good job and they...
Yeah.
The board of health looks at it?
They're looking at it as part of it because other department heads have terms too. So, that's all been sent to KP by the mayor's office.
Okay.
I think we should make it clear that it's not, it's not our authority.
Okay. So, at this time, we'll just, we're going to give it regular course. We're going to have them come down here at 6:45 on the 14th and we'll proceed from there. If, if we don't need a vote, then we'll just give it leave to withdraw. Okay? All right. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, 12-23, Madam Clerk.
12-23, Richard M. Marshon, request to close Monument Square as well as the following city parking lots and city streets for the 30th Annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival, which is Saturday, the 23rd of September, 2023, between 5:30 AM to 7:00 PM. And also for the rain date of Saturday, September 30th, 2023, between 5:30 AM and 7:00 PM. One, from Upper West Street to Lower West Street to the Main Street intersection. Two, Park Street from Main Street to the West Street merge. Three, Main Street from the intersection of Mechanic Street and Lower West Street to Merriam Avenue. Four, the City Hall parking lot. Five, the city parking lot adjacent to the Leominster City Hall of Upper West Street. Six, the parking lot between the First Baptist and First Church Unitarian used for people with needs or disabilities. Seven, the mixed use of, the mixed use of the upper parking garage as used in the past. All butters, which include religious organizations and downtown merchants, shall be notified.
Okay. And 12-23 is referred to the chairman of city property, Councilor Ardinger.
Thank you very much. First time on the calendar, regular course, please, with referrals to the police department and the DPW.
Okay. And also to, if we can refer this to the fire department as well, just so they're aware of the date because it does affect their egress out of the church street facility. All right. So, 12-23 has been given regular course with a referral to the police department, DPW, and fire department. Moving on to matters before the city council, Mr. Chairman of Finance, the first item is a financial report. Are you ready to report?
I am. We began the fiscal year on July 1st with a balance in the stabilization account of We've added interest in the amount of $42,269 since that date, bringing the total to $20, We have appropriated or have on the calendar pending for appropriation, a total of $2,536,424, leaving a balance of $18,181,212. And that is the financial report.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on the financial report? Seeing none, we will now move on to items under finance, beginning with C-19. Mr. Chimmon, are you ready to report?
I am. C-19, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that a police donation account be established allowing the police department to accept donations and spend funds on applicable police expenses. Apparently, there has been a K-9 donation account in place for quite a while. And typically, there are, there is a donor or donors that give approximately $5,000 per year towards that account. The difficulty is we, we don't have a K-9 unit currently. So, the COCProlers suggested that we establish a more generic police donation account so that if there are people who are generous and civic-minded and want to give money towards various causes that would affect the police department, they could give it and then we wouldn't be so limited in establishing different expenditures connected with that account. So, Mr. President, it would be my position to grant C-19. I think it makes good sense and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Councilor Cormier?
I agree.
Councilor Angelini?
I'm making unanimous, Mr. President.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-19. Is there any further discussion? Council Frida?
Yeah, I agree with the finance chair. I think there are a lot of people in certain conditions if the police have had to respond and is an appreciation and they want to do something, there should be a mechanism for them to be able to do a donation to that department.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on C-19? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-19 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-19 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I don't think there is an order associated with that.
There would be, there would be no order on this. Thank you. C-20, Mr. Chimmon, are you ready to report?
I am. C-20, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request a transfer of $203,914.30 be made from the E-911 Grant Fund to the Fire Capital Project Fund to continue work on the new 911 dispatch center. The city receives grant money annually from a state program that allows us to apply for reimbursements, a certain reimbursements in conjunction with that state program connected to our 911 center. We have a current balance in that account of $460,000 approximately. This money would be coming out of that account and this particular proposed expense by the mayor is an appropriate expense with respect to the guidelines of those grant funds. Obviously, it's going for a good cause and will give us a modern 911 dispatch center. Mr. President, it would be my position to grant C-20. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Councilor Cormier?
I agree.
Councilor Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-20. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-20 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-20 has been granted. Now, Mr. Chimmon, do you have an order?
I do. Order the sum of $203,914.30 be transferred to the 911 dispatch center from the E-911 Grant Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-20's order has been adopted. Moving on to C-21.
C-21, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the appropriation of $2,500,000 that was made on June 27th, 2022, to the Fallbrook School Capital Project Fund, with the same amount being transferred from the excess and deficiency account in Perren's undesignated fund balance, be re-read into the record and new updated language from the MSBA be approved. This is related to a situation where the original order that we passed back in June was set up essentially to suggest that it was going to be a bond that was going to support these funds. The language ironically came from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I don't think they're too used to communities paying in cash for these sorts of things. Of course, that's not the case with us and that's what this is being funded with. So, I'm going to read into the record the new language as required by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, that the city of Leominster appropriates the amount of $2,500,000 for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study for Fallbrook Elementary School located at 25 De Chico Drive, Leominster, Mass, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the city of Leominster may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Set amount to be expended under the direction of the Leominster School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, set amount should be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. The city of Leominster acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. Any cost of the city of Leominster incurs in excess of any grant approved by the, by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city of Leominster. This order shall supersede the order of the city council adopted on June 27th, 2022. Mr. President, for obvious reasons and to correct the prior authorization, be my position to grant C-21. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Councilor Cormier?
I agree.
Councilor Angelini?
I support the superseding order as well, Mr. President.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-21. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I recuse myself on this matter.
Okay. You have a family member in the school system?
Thank you.
I understand. Thank you. Is there any other discussion on C-21? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-21 do so in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-21 has been granted and there is no order on this one either as well.
There actually is.
Oh, there, oh, there is?
Yeah.
We have to, okay. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Move, order that the sum of $2,500,000 be appropriated to the Fallbrook School Capital Project Fund, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order for C-21 has been adopted. Moving on to items under legal affairs, 6-23, Mr. Chimmon, are you ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, thank you. As you are all well-aware, early this evening, we conducted a public hearing that was continued from our last meeting. And this is petition 6-23, Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. Ms. Wood also provided a letter of support, letting us all know that the vote was six to zero from the Planning Board in support of this petition. We had the building commissioner down this evening with a member of the Planning Board and our planning director as well. So, I know that in the letter, we were reminded that a couple of amendments are needed. One was a spelling error and the other was description under the use chart. So, the chair would certainly entertain a motion.
Councilor Bedanza?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to amend 6-23 by substituting the word disassembly for the word disassembly contained in the definitional section, as well as substituting the words vehicle storage lot for the original petition, which indicated vehicle over the lot.
Okay. So, is that your motion?
Yes.
And is there a motion on the floor? And a second, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, is there any discussion on, on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting those changes signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, this has been amended. Mr. Chairman, are you now ready to report on the amended version?
I am indeed. After that housekeeping matter, I would recommend that we adopt the ordinance as amended, proposed ordinance as amended.
And I'll check with your committee?
And I would ask you to poll members of my committee, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilor Bedanza?
Thank you. I am in favor.
Councilor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the way, of the, sorry, of the legal affairs committee to grant 6-23 as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 6-23 as amended signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 6-23 has been granted. Moving on to 9-23.
Thank you, Mr. President. 9-23, Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot size requirements for a lot division in the residential A zone for lot sized a minimum of 37,780 square feet. We have established a public hearing date of November 28th, 2022 at 6:50 PM. So, at this time, Mr. President, I would ask for further time.
Okay. You've heard the request for further time on 9-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 9-23 further time signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 9-23 has been given further time. Moving on to 10-23.
10-23, Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot width requirement for lots in the rural residential zone. Once again, Mr. President, we have a public hearing scheduled for November 28th, 2022 at 6:51 PM. So, at this time, I would request further time with this petition.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation of legal affairs to give 10-23 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 10-23 further time signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 10-23 has been given further time. 11-23.
Thank you, Mr. President. 11-23, David Cormier, Ward 3 Consular, and Pauline Cormier, Ward 2 Consular, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-29 of the revised ordinances entitled handicap parking spaces and add the following. Add three handicap parking spaces in the Carter Park parking lot on Main Street, map 24, parcel 9, at the southernmost part of the lot. Mr. President, once again, we have a public hearing scheduled for November 28th, 2022 at 6:45 PM. So, at this time, I would request further time on this petition.
Okay. So, the recommendation from legal affairs is to give 11-23 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 11-23 further time signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 11-23 has been given further time. Moving on to items under Ways and Means. Madam Chairwoman, we have a few appointments.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to start off by saying that we had two wonderful women come in and interview today. They're both well-qualified. Actually, two very different areas of working for the city, the two fascinating women. The first that we will take up is Marlene Tebow. She was in this evening. She is a person who's well-known to the community. She is, I think, her resume and her work history and her history of volunteerism for the city speaks for itself. It would be my pleasure to support the appointment of Ms. Tebow to the Office of Counseling and Aging. and Aging, and I would ask you to check with the members of my committee.
Counsel Arndt.
I certainly agree.
Counsel Deacon.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the appointment of Marlene Tebow to the Council on Aging. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, Marlene Tebow is now confirmed to the Council on Aging. Congratulations to her. I believe she has left, but if she's listening on TV, congratulations, Marlene. And moving on to, you have two other appointments, Madam Clerk, to the Conservation Commission.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd first like to start with Stephanie Quinlan. This young woman was in here for an interview this evening. Again, a stellar applicant. I think her work history and her past and her enthusiasm for the position is going to be a wonderful service to our community and a big help with the Conservation Commission. I look forward to seeing what she's going to bring to the Commission, and I would strongly support the appointment of Stephanie Quinlan to the Conservation Commission. I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Counsel Arndt.
I agree.
Counsel Deacon.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to confirm the appointment of Stephanie Quinlan to the Conservation Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of this confirmation signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, Stephanie Quinlan has been appointed to the Conservation Commission. I also believe she has stepped out, but congratulations to her as well. Moving on to the last appointment, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we doing anything with Josh Bowdrich?
Yes, yes, she's taking that up right now.
That's okay. I thought you were moving to the next order of business.
No, no.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have an interview scheduled. We received a letter from the Mayor's Office on October 21. We, just to summarize briefly, it's a letter to the City Council members regarding the appointment of Josh Bowdrich to the Conservation Commission. I respectfully request further time as we are currently looking into the matter, and if you have any further questions, feel free to call us, to contact the Mayor's Office at any time. Based on that, I would ask for further time on this. There is some questions that have come up. It's my understanding that a referral has been made out to KP Law, just to clarify whether or not we can go forward with this, so I would ask for further time.
Okay, and I'll check with members of your committee. Counsel Arndt.
I agree.
And Counsel Deacon.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the request to grant further time to the appointment of Joshua Bowdrich to the Office of the Conservation Commission. Is there any discussion? Counsel Frida.
Where does that leave the temporary appointment that was made?
Well, if.
Through the Chair to the Clerk?
Yeah.
Or unless you know.
Well, I guess I can say that as far as a temporary appointment, I mean, I share your concerns, you know? There certainly are some questions as to whether we can confirm this appointment or not. As far as a temporary appointment is concerned, you know, that's, that's what the, that's what the, the Mayor has that authority. That's not our authority to, we just get notification that he's done it. So if there, if he has, if he has given someone an appointment to a commission that shouldn't be serving there, then that is going to be up to him to make that correction. He's going to have to remove them. Temporary appointments have never been the authority of City Council. We're just notified of them and that's it. So if there's been an error, he's going to have to, that's going to be on him for him to rectify that.
Well, I, I think the question is, did he vote at the last meeting when he was supposed to be down here for an interview? If he voted at the meeting under a temporary, if there's a conflict here to pursue.
I'm going to call a point of order. None of this is before us. We have no jurisdiction over temporary appointments.
I agree.
And I think we're going into an area we don't belong.
I agree.
I disagree. I mean, he, he voted, if he voted and there's a conflict, then.
Not our jurisdiction.
I don't disagree with you. It's just not our jurisdiction. The Mayor has, the Mayor's going to have to rectify that.
That's, that's.
He took the action, not us.
Yep, that's fine.
As far as the appointment, and that's going to be on him. I don't disagree with what you're saying at all, though.
Mr. President, I, if this matter goes forward amongst us, I would recuse myself based on a conflict with, with Mr. Bowdrich, as he's a school committee member, and my wife's the superintendent of schools, so I don't want to cause any conflict on that vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the confirmation of Joshua Bowdrich and giving this further time? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving further time to Joshua Bowdrich signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, this has been given further time. Moving on to new business, first reading of an ordinance, seven dash twenty-three. Is the Chairman of Legal Affairs ready to report?
He is. Seven dash twenty-three. Mr. President, this is Joseph A. Quinn, Sealer of Waits and Measures, request to amend the City of Lemmister Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, by updating the content of Article Ten, Inspector Waits and Measures. This request includes updating the ordinance and the fee schedule. A recommended ordinance and fee schedule has been approved by the Mayor and has been submitted to the City Council. The reason for this petition is that the current ordinance is outdated and needs to be updated. Current ordinance was last updated with significant changes in 1960. The fee schedule has had minor periodic, has had minor changes periodically over the years. Mr. President, I had the every intention of putting this on for a first reading of the ordinance. However, the Clerk informed me late this afternoon that she hasn't received anything back on this from the KP Law.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm going to have to ask for further time on this.
Okay, not a problem. And Counsel Bedanza, are you all set with further time?
I don't think we have a choice.
Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give seven dash twenty-three, which is the first reading of this ordinance, further time. All those, is there any questions or comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving this further time signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the first reading of this ordinance has indeed been given further time. Moving on to, is there any other new business? This item wasn't a new business. Counsel Angelini.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to share in the new business with my colleagues some good news. I was informed today by Ms. Wendy Weeks, the Grant Administrator for the City of Lemmister, who does such a marvelous job for us, that we were awarded a grant in the amount of $36,000 that will help us navigate the MBTA zoning that we're going to have to be dealing with in the future. It's my understanding that the money comes from the Department of Community Development's Community Planning Grant Program, and that at some point within the next couple of days, I think that we'd hold a press conference in announcing this. So this should give us a little bit of help as we move forward in that complex and perhaps quite controversial zoning request.
Nice, thank you very much. Thank you. Is there any other new business? Counsel Frida.
Yeah, I just want to make the community aware of the fact that on November 2, DOT is going to have a public hearing by Zoom that is going to be major renovations to Central Street from the Sterling Town Line to Tossie Street with the inclusion of a rotary that's being proposed in front of the old Hess Gas Station or Rollstone Bank, that, that whole intersection, to be a rotary instead of trying to deal with the lights. If it's anything like the Sterling one, it ought to be something special. But this is major, I mean, bike, I think there are bike paths addressing some of the lights, but the Zoom meeting is November 2. I think anybody who is interested can just check on DOT and get the information to get turned on to the public hearing.
Thank you very much. I'm a little disappointed it's on Zoom. I wish it was, said I'm a little disappointed it's on Zoom. I wish it was live, you know, in person in our, in our, you know, auditorium here, but.
I'm a little disappointed that we didn't get any notice other than.
Right, right.
Seeing it in the paper.
Yeah. Yep, I agree. Thank you very much for that. Any other new business? Counsel Brady.
Just wanted to bring the rest of the Council up to speed on, I spoke with the superintendent of schools today. One of the lawyers in the negotiation is having some personal issues, and with the approval of both sides, they've suspended talks for this week. It's a family medical emergency.
Okay.
So just wanted to share that because it was shared with me.
Thank you very much for keeping us in the loop. Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none, is there any, there is one item under old business, which is the second reading of an ordinance, which is formally petitioned C-13. Mr. Chairman, you ready to report?
I am indeed, Mr. President. C-13, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the City Council adopt the attached ordinance updates. This ordinance update to Chapter sixteen personnel, Section sixteen dash thirty of the Lemmister Revised Ordinances reflects. Number one, Lemmister Fire Department salary and wage adjustments for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024. Number two, Lemmister Police Department salary and wage adjustments for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024. Number three, dispatch salary and wage adjustments for the fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024. Number four, Department of Public Works salary and wage adjustments for the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2024. There is an attached chart with all the wages and the periodic adjustment table, and that's available at the Clerk's office if anyone would like to review that. That's a public document. And at this time, Mr. President, I would recommend that we adopt the second reading of the ordinance, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counsel Bedanza.
I'm in favor.
Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
You've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Bedanza.
Yea.
Counsel Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Arndt.
Yea.
Counsel Angelini.
Yea.
Counsel Brady.
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Counsel Deacon.
Yea.
Counsel Frida.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The second reading of this ordinance has been adopted. Is there any other old business? Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you very much. Through the Chair to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, I would like to request C-22, that that be referred to the Director of Veteran Services. That's about the park grant, Monument Square revitalization, all that stuff.
And that was a referral to?
The Director of Veteran Services.
And then clerk?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other old business to come before the City Council? Seeing none, is there anything under the community calendar? Madam Clerk, do you have something in the community calendar? I think I know what it is, but go ahead.
It's early voting time for the state election. We're going to be doing it regular business hours, and then this weekend, on Saturday, we're here from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's also the last day to register to vote for this election. Sunday, we are here from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and then it will go back to regular business hours at the City Hall Auditorium.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else under the community calendar? Counsel Frida.
I'm sure there was some kind of a mistake, but I got a call or an email today, and I think somebody said they saw it on Facebook, too, that one person got, you already know?
I know.
Got six ballots in the mail?
I haven't heard about six, but I've heard about a duplicate. So with our ballots, we have a system that we're supposed to scan the cards in through a barcode, and as we do that, we save the data into the state system. Then we pull a set of labels, and that's how we proc all 5,000 votes that went out, or ballots that went out to residents. When we do this, we also do a self-audit at the end to make sure everything gets out appropriately. There was a glitch that the state is aware of in the system, so about 100 people, it looked as if the mailing voter label wasn't proct in the system. So I had a decision to make, and I decided it was either let it go and hope that the state's part did its job, or B, send out a duplicate ballot and know for a fact that it's going to actually get to the voter, and I chose option B, because I didn't want to accidentally disenfranchise anybody, and they potentially not get to vote because of a state error. The state is aware of it, because I've made them aware of it. Our lawyers are aware of it, and if anybody has any concerns, please let me know. The second ballot that you get in will look odd. We broke our mail machine when we were doing all 5,000 ballots. We had to hand stamp and hand label the second ballot, and there was about 1,500 that were hand stamped and hand labeled, but then of those, 100 of them were the duplicates that we recognized might have been an issue. So if you get a duplicate ballot, do not panic. If you have any questions on what to do with it, please call our office. We're more than happy to help and guide you.
This gentleman wasn't complaining. He was thinking that it wasn't cost-effective. He wasn't, he said he had two that were printed by machine, two that were printed by hand, and two that were cursive. He got six of them, and, and two, two and two.
I invite him to call me, because I haven't been made aware of that.
I'll give you his name. He gave me his name.
Yeah, I would love it so I can follow up with him, because.
Again, he wasn't critical. He thought it was cost-effective. He said if it happened a number of times, it would be expensive, so.
No, I agree, yeah. No, but I'd love to know if you could get me that offline so I can check it to see what's going on, if there's a further error, so I can let the state know.
And if I may, just to ensure the public, Madam Clerk, I'm sure that obviously you can send in as many ballots as you want. There's only going to be one that's going to be accepted.
Only one gets accepted.
Because once your name gets crossed off, any others that come in.
That's correct.
Are rejected.
No matter what, you only get one, and it gets matched up to your name and your signature in our voter registration system that's proct by the state and verified with your own personal credentials that you use to, when you vote, register to vote. And then, once we get that in, the very first one we receive that matches your signature and your information, that's the one that goes to the polls, gets locked in the vault. Everything else is automatically rejected and put in our vault and won't see the light of day.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
For the City Clerk, just for the public, could you tell them the, give people a phone number?
Yeah.
And a contact person, if it should be you, or if it should be the Assistant Clerk?
Sure. So a good number to reach us if you have any questions regarding this is 978-534-7500, extension 1175. You can ask for me personally, or Mary Belparas, the Assistant, too.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel Angelini, did I see your hand as well?
I actually was going to ask for an explanation about how we can ensure that the ballots are only coming once.
But they are.
If they want to fix up, just please, thank you.
Okay, all right. Is there any other items to come into the community calendar?
Move to adjourn.
Seeing none, we have a motion to adjourn. Counsel Bedanza, seconded by, I don't know who had their hand up first, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr. Is there any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, nine to zero, we are adjourned. And it's Monday Night Football now, I think, for a lot of people, right?